I call the regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wausau School District to order. And now we'll see the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
During this meeting, board members will in many cases be hearing information presented to them for the first time. Their responses will in many cases be extemporaneous and should not be considered either their final opinion on the matter nor should any -- let's see what's here. Their final opinion on the matter nor should any opinion expressed by an individual board member during any meeting be considered the opinion of the board as a whole unless it is presented as such by the presenting officer. Okay. We're going to read the parcolation for Gifted Education Week, which was last week. Whereas our children and youth are one of Wisconsin's greatest resources and those with intellectual, academic, creative leadership and artistic gifts and talents need nurturing and support. And whereas, just as giftedness comes in a variety of domains, it has no limits related to age, race, ethnicity, or national origin, economic status, sex, gender identity or gender expression, sexual orientation, religion, multilingualism, or exceptionality. And whereas, collaboration between school district staff, families, organizations, community members, and the students themselves serve as the foundation for successful support in all high ability and high potential children and youth. And whereas, the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction joins the leadership and commitment of the Wisconsin Association for Talented and Gifted, the Wisconsin Center for Academically Talented Youth, the Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, the Association of Wisconsin School Administrators, the Wisconsin Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development, the Wisconsin RTI Center, and the Cooperative Educational Services Agencies as we work together to support Wisconsin's children, children with gifts and talents. Therefore, be it resolved that the week of November 5th to 9th, 2018, be declared Gifted Education Week, a time to celebrate the work of schools, families, organizations, and community members to support students with gifts and talents. Signed, Toni Evers. All right. We're going to skip past the spotlight on education since it's not even six o'clock yet. And we'll go down to public and student comment for items appearing on the agenda. No, there are none. So next, I seek a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes additional staff, replacement staff, contract increases, decreases, contract renewals, nonrenewals, leaves of absence, resignations, terminations, voluntary retirements, minutes from the regular session of October 8th, 2018, the special session of October 22nd, 2018, closed session of October 22nd, 2018, and special session of October 22nd, 2018, payment of bills, budget status, and investment reports, and donation to the district.
Before we vote, I just want to make sure before we vote, there was nothing A through G.
Correct.
That wasn't --
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I know. All right.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries with great gratitude for the donations. We'll move on to old/recurring business. And let's talk about the handbook updates.
Hello. Tammy Vince from Human Resources. And we're coming back with our employee handbook for the -- I'm just standing right here. Mark McCannowitz is here with me as well from Human Resources. These are the changes that we are recommending that the committee has already looked at and approved. And we're just bringing it to the board for their final approval to these updates so we can get the information out to our employees.
I just have one question. When we make changes like this, because they happen periodically, do you send something out to employees to let them know that there have been changes made? Because I know that at the beginning of the year, the employees review the handbook and they sign something that says they've reviewed the handbook. Is that correct?
What our typical process has been is that once the changes are made, then we send something to the staff saying, here's the handbook with the new changes, sign this that you have been given notice of this, and here's a summary of the changes. So they will get the same summary that the board did see. And then our ongoing goal is to do that every time we make a change that comes up in the employee handbook.
And then also, we're notified, they will be notified through Skyward, that's the tool that we choose to use, that they sign that they received, just so that we have something in their file that they were notified.
Right.
That the handbook has been updated. Another thing that we use as a tool is a survey. In the handbook itself, right at the beginning of the handbook, there's a Survey Monkey link. And if there's anything that people want to make a recommendation for, or let us know that they think something should be changed or whatnot, we collect that data.
Okay.
I guess I have a question on that last comment. So is that a suggested change that you would get after changes have already been made?
It's ongoing. If they open the handbook electronically, the survey link is there, link is there throughout the entire year. So right now, we're working off the old handbook. It's the same survey. So it's something that's perpetual.
So then when you get ready to look at positive changes, you look at that survey data?
Yes, absolutely.
And then see if something is coming up over and over again?
Yes.
Or if something just seems like a good idea that hadn't thought of and then --
Sometimes employees read the handbook and say, this doesn't, I don't understand this part. And we decide new ways to phrase it so it's easier to understand. Sometimes laws change. Sometimes policies change, and we try to keep it updated.
Absolutely. It's a fluid document.
Well, and this is such a touchy subject, and I just have to mention it one more time, because the handbook is something that came out after Act 10. And many of the items that are in the handbook were negotiated through contracts with unions. So it's just, you know, we were really careful about approving this, but I think that, I think at least from my perspective, everything seems to be an improvement for employees. And I wasn't clear on a couple of things, but now I am. And I'm just wondering if anybody else has any questions or concerns, or --
My only comment or concern is just the notice to the employees that they have time to process changes. And I know that there was a lot of, well, the feedback I heard was some gratitude when Dr. Hiltz sent out an email kind of addressing, clarifying, if you will, some of the proposed changes. So I'm glad that the employees had time to become familiar with these. And thank you for that email, too. I think that helped a lot.
Okay. Then I would seek a motion to approve the updates to the employee handbook as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Under new business, we'll just keep going until six. See how far we get. Under new business, the 2018-2019 Student Demographic Report, that was an information-only item. That was at our Ed Ops meeting. And John Uding presented that information. Any questions or comments? Next, the WASB Early Childhood Resolution. Jane and Nina will present information for this.
Yeah, the meeting took place this Saturday, this last Saturday. And Nina has a very extensive resolution that really encompasses everything that we have in this one. And when we get the final copy, we can look at it as a board and decide if there are any motions that we want Nina to make as the delegate at the assembly to make it fit if we don't think it fits what we're looking for.
So are you suggesting we just allow Nina to forward their resolution and then we just act on it?
Yeah.
And is this their resolution when it's written here?
No, this is what we had in mind. And when I took it this last Saturday and I gave it to Chris, he said that he felt it really was encompassed already in what Nina had put forward. But there's still a work in progress. And when we get the final form that's going to go to the delegate assembly, then we can look at it and decide if we want to offer any changes.
So what you're saying is we don't need any action on this table?
No.
But we're well on our way to having a really good resolution. Okay. All right. Should we keep going? Yes, we can. From the policy resolution in the Legislative Committee of the whole, Policy 5750, expulsion The PRL Committee recommends to the full Board of Education the approval of revisions to Policy 5750, expulsion procedures. Any discussion?
Well, I do have a question. At our meeting where we discussed this, there was a comment made that it mirrors the statute. And then I looked at the statute and it doesn't mirror the statute, in particular, number six, which wasn't the purpose of the revision, I know, but we're looking at it. So my question is, do we want to mirror the statute? I would think on matters of expulsion, given the permanency, mirroring the statute of the state would be ideal. See, the issue, if you can pull up the statute, Wisconsin Statute 120.13, number one, is this number six is more of a descriptor of the other items listed. So then after our meeting, I went home, I printed this out, and I was lining it up with the statute in it. I couldn't scan it and send everybody because it wouldn't make sense to you, but it was just, this number six doesn't apply like we, in the state statute, how we have it here. The state statute says, "In this subdivision, conduct that endangers a person or property includes making a threat to the health or safety of a person or making a threat to damage property." That has been incorporated as a separate provision in our policy. So it's not identical to the state statute.
I would rather it be more like the state statute. I'm fine with what we have proposed to change tonight to add. But if we're going to look at it again next month to look at that change, there probably isn't any reason to make tonight's change. But I agree that it should more closely mirror the state statute.
So am I hearing from people that we should bring this back next month? With the changes that make this policy a mirror of the state statute? So we won't approve that tonight?
The only other question I have, then, is how this number nine is going to be listed? Because if you see, all the other ones are or, 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 and then and, number eight is and the board is satisfied that the interest of the school demands the student's expulsion.
Mm-hmm.
Now does --
It should be incorporated before that, is what you're saying?
Well, I'm just wondering if that's, if that would be correct.
Using an or means that one could stand alone to be agreed.
Right. I mean presumably, somebody should ask that, it's in the interest of the school, but that's just the question I have, looking at the formatting here.
Unless the statute says that we have to, that we don't have a choice. If we don't have a choice, it would make sense to leave it where it is.
Okay.
But if we have a choice, then yeah, it should come before that so that we could say, student did this and the board is satisfied that in the interest of school. So I don't know the answer to that question.
It used to be a requirement, now the board does have the option.
So then we should move it up then?
Okay.
So that makes it clear that it's still up to us.
Okay. That's a good change. So we would bring this back at the next regular board meeting, since it's gotten this far. So then we'll move on to Policy 9200, Board President. The PRL Committee recommends to the full Board of Education the approval of revisions to Policy 9200, Board President. I think everything is included in here. We've looked at this one quite a few times already also. So any comments or questions remaining? Then I would seek a motion to approve --
Beth, I'm sorry. It's 12 crossed out.
Yeah, because we don't do that anymore.
So then 13 and 14 should be changed.
So 13 should be 12 and, yeah, should be 12 and 13.
Minor change. But I think we can still approve it with that.
Right. Yeah.
That's right.
Administration can make changes like that without board approval at any time.
Okay. Then I would seek a motion to approve Policy 9200, Board President.
So moved.
As revised.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, it's six o'clock, so let's go back. We're going to go back to Agenda Item Number Three, Spotlight on Education.
Give my team just a moment to assemble themselves because we have quite a few speakers. Do that just briefly.
We have so much time to do it.
So that's what you thought we were doing?
So.
In May of this year, members of our Title I Advisory Committee brought forth to the Board of Education a new board policy, 5420, which was titled Title I Parents and Family Engagement. Through that process and communication, the Board of Education approved that new policy. And during communication, Mary Tao as well as other members of the board invited our committee back in the future for a spotlight in education where we can highlight the many great opportunities we provide for families and parents to become engaged in their child's education. So I invite you tonight to listen to the many members of our Title I Parental Engagement and Advisory Committee who are here to share with you, we're better together.
Hi, I'm Nancy Cedar. I'm the Out of School Learning Coordinator. And as I was putting this together, I was thinking I'd almost like to dedicate this to our former board member Bonnie Henning, because if you remember, she always had, and what's the parent involvement piece or the parent engagement piece? So I was really thinking of her. Family engagement activities or programs exist at all of our schools in the Wausau School District through their universal PBIS and RTI teams. But our focus tonight is Title I Schools. And each of the schools has an enrichment coordinator who's here with us tonight. They're wearing either their school spirit wear or our G2M t-shirts. The enrichment coordinator position has evolved from what first began as a Vista project with DPI around 18 years ago. And I was one of those first Vista volunteers. And following that program, the district created a position called Parent Partnership Coordinators, or PPCs, as some of you might remember. Many of these schools also had 21st Century Community Learning Center grants that had a site coordinator for the after-school programs. So at that time, it was pretty nice. There was, the structure was a 30-hour-per-week parent partnership coordinator and a 20-hour-per-week site coordinator. But over time, those grants began to end, and it became necessary to consolidate our staffing. So this was kind of accomplished through a merger between 21st Century Funding and Title I. And the parent partnership coordinator position and the site coordinator position actually became one position. So this basically streamlined things from 50 hours per week to 37 hours per week per school. And gradually, as more schools transitioned to District Fund 80, it became necessary to streamline this even further, creating a new model for non-fund grant sites of 23.75 hours per week for what we now call enrichment coordinators. And these people are working very hard now to maximize efficiency and coordinate both after-school programs and family engagement. It's a big job. So things have really changed from when I worked as a Vista to increase parent involvement 18 years ago, and it seems like 100 years ago. But I would host a family reading night at Hawthorne Hills, and I was lucky, seriously, if 10 people attended. And it was usually the same 10. Attendance at events now can be as high as several hundred parents and children in attendance at a school event. And the schools are indicating they think they're reaching about 50 to 75 percent of their families at one or more of these events in a year. So here is a snapshot of what's taking place. And now I'm going to introduce Mark Holdhuzen, who is one of the members of our parent advisory, Title I Parent Advisory Committee.
So yeah, I'm Mark. I have a daughter at Lincoln Elementary School, and I've been on this board four-ish years? Three or four years now? So the schools that have these programs are Franklin, GD Jones, Grant, and Hawthorne Hills.
And then there's another slide. Yeah. There we go.
As well as Marshall, Lincoln, Jefferson, and now EEA, who just received a 21st Century Community Learning Grant, as well as some private schools that are also included in the advisory group.
Good evening. I'm Robyn Branks. I'm the principal at GD Jones. And the slide you're looking at now are wonderful pictures of some of our third-grade families that have joined us at school for Family Lunch Day. Family engagement activities, as Nancy mentioned, are something that we continue to have each and every day. There's got, each and every day, sorry, each and every month, scheduled on a monthly basis. And what we as people working within the schools are discovering is that we've had to change when these activities are happening to accommodate the busy schedules of our families and to meet the needs of the students and their families in the busy schedules. So what I've truly discovered is that Friday nights are a huge night where families are able to join us. And we have, as Nancy mentioned, seen an increase in parent involvement and engagement on that night. Family lunches are very popular activities, and some of our buildings are now even starting to incorporate family breakfast in with that, and seeing good results with that. Because the family lunches have been very popular, what we have found out as well is that breaking them down by grade level is an opportunity to invite more parents in and get more parents in at each of the grade levels. So like I said, this is an example of our third-grade luncheon. In September, right away on the 18th, we had our September kindergarten Family Lunch Day at Jones, and it was highly attended by many of our kindergarten, new kindergarten families as well. So these family lunches, these engagement activities with our parents began several years ago with the research on the importance of family mealtime. The Marathon County Health Department is actively involved in promoting these types of activities. Some of the schools have volunteers that come in to family lunch days to join their, to join the students whose parents are not able to attend the monthly lunches. It's also notable that it's not just the parents who are attending these family lunch days, but we also have grandparents and other extended family members, aunts, uncles, and other examples like that. We truly would like to give a shout-out to our nutrition services and our custodial staff at all of our buildings throughout the district for all their hard work to help promote these activities and to help us make them successful. This next slide is just an example of some of the ways in which we are helping to make areas of our buildings inviting and warm and welcoming places for families to come to our buildings. They often, and these family engagement events have often also included our community agencies, which is a way that we can help connect our families to our local programs and resources as well. Efforts have been made, as I mentioned, to create a family-friendly, welcoming environment. And as I mentioned, this is our family resource lounge area at GD Jones. And last school year, our out-of-school enrichment coordinator, Kim Huffman, was unable to join us this evening. Worked really hard to make this space a nice space for our parents. And it is utilized often on a daily basis throughout the entire day.
Hi, I'm Colleen Fulej Jackson, principal over at Lincoln Elementary. And I'm here just to talk a little bit about how businesses have, in the Wausau community, have really supported the schools' family fun nights. Being new to Wausau, I'm really pleased to see what great community support we have here at the schools. So this slide features one of our newer business members, Colazo Fossil. And then the next one shows a Home Depot family night. They provide staffing. Home Depot provides tools and kits to provide a variety of kid-friendly projects. I know they've come to Lincoln several years now. The UW Extension Food Drive Program offers a three-part healthy eating series called Yuck to Young. And I did attend this last year. It was wonderful. Also, Thomas Jefferson has a wonderful school garden that has been incorporated into a number of family fun nights, sampling and cooking with their produce and distributing the harvest. And finally, we have the local Red Cross and Fire Department who come to Hawthorne Hills to teach how to avoid and respond to an emergency. And I'd like to introduce one of the best enrichment coordinators. Behind me, Nancy Drycozen, at Lincoln.
Thank you. My name is Nancy Drycozen. I am the enrichment coordinator at Lincoln Elementary School. So in this slide, some of our sites have made connections with the National Honor Society students to help with our family nights. And last year also, DECA did a food drive for a local pantry in conjunction of the family night. Lincoln families here are enjoying a night at the Planetarium. And here we see John Marshall families enjoying a Saturday event at the Weston YMCA. And then some weekends, families have outings. This one is at Willow Springs. And also, the Raptor Education Group, Reggie, has offered many family night programs at all of the different schools, too.
Good evening. I'm Libby White, principal at Franklin Elementary. Hello. And I'm, my part is just to bring forward the wonderful partnership with Franklin and the Boys and Girls Club. For five years now, we've had just a true collaboration and many activities from the family fun nights to an after-school program that runs five days a week in the morning and in the afternoon. It's a wonderful partnership, and those are just a few of the many, many activities that we've shared together. I did want to mention that Megan Hillkey, who's sitting on my left here, is one of our brand-new employees to the district. She's a stent parent but is also the new Franklin enrichment coordinator. So we welcome Megan.
Hi, I'm Dana DeWinter, the enrichment coordinator at Hawthorne Hills. As Wausau has an increasingly diverse population, some of our schools have done cultural events to reflect this. Hawthorne Hills had a cultural fair last year where parents and community partners shared some of their foods and customs. Ten different cultures were represented with dance, displays, music, and food. Many parents participated in sharing their history and culture. This event helped to build relationships with our parents.
Hello, I'm Megan Lauer, enrichment coordinator at Thomas Jefferson Elementary. Sorry, I'm going to go. We have a Mung New Year celebration. It started four years ago? We did it at a different time, but now we've taken it on as the New Year, the Mung New Year happens, we have our New Year celebration. And we are going to be having one this Thursday. So you are all invited to attend this year's event on November 15th from 5:30 to 7:30 at Thomas Jefferson. It's like our, it's our favorite family night of the year. Lincoln also had a cultural family night, and they included some Mung dancers. Another resource for family nights is our wonderful school forest. The school forest also has a Native American village that can be incorporated into family nights.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Gabriel, the enrichment coordinator at Grant. Family University Network was created a few years ago by another Vista project through DPI. This is a program intended to provide district-wide opportunities and programs for all district families. The past couple of years, Family University Network, otherwise we call it FUN, partnered with some other entities to -- with some other entities to implement some parent cafes, which were very well-received at some of our schools. Parent cafes are a strength-based program that provides facilitated conversation among parents on a variety of topics. EEA hopes to offer this program this year.
Hi, I'm Lynn Strillo, at Title I Literacy Culture for the District. Early efforts in parent involvement had some lure of food or fun, and then sought to use this opportunity to impart relevant educational or academic information. This sort of agenda, although well-intended to connect parents to their child's education, was not achieving the desired results in terms of attendance. To counter this, the Title I Advisory Group for the past several years has approached programming with a "We're Better Together" theme.
Hi, I'm Dawn Teske, the Title I Administrative Assistant. And I am here to talk a little bit about that slide as well. A monthly slideshow is created highlighting events at each of the schools. This slideshow is shared at a monthly meetings and on our district website. An intentional effort was made to get parents to feel more comfortable and connected with their school environment. Activities were designed to allow parents and children to have high-quality time together and connect with other parents and school staff. The message has been simply, "Just come." The emphasis has been on building trust and relationships. It is still necessary to, necessary, of course, to share information related to their child's education. However, we are transparent and upfront about this.
My name is Shannon Young, principal at EEA Learning Academy. The Title I Advisory Group has attended workshops on family engagement at CISA IX and has watched webinars on this topic and has purchased books that give us ideas on research-based best practice. It's been important that we build our own capacity so then we can continue to share those skills with parents. Dr. Karen Map is a pioneer and a well-respected person in this field. This is a picture of one of the books that many of the sites have, have purchased and utilized. Her research and practice has focused on cultivating partnerships among families, community members, and educators that support student achievement in school improvement. Dr. Map's research-based dual-capacity framework identifies four process conditions that align with best practices for parent engagement. And these four process conditions are that family engagement activities demonstrate some of the following things that we'll show you through slides.
My name is Lisa Comfort, and I am a new enrichment coordinator, focusing on the family engagement at EEA. So the first one here is that they are linked to learning, in other words, aligned with the learning and developmental goals of students. They are relational, so that efforts are intentional about building relationships of trust and respect with families. Are developmental, working on the assumptions that families already have strength and knowledge on which you can build. And are collaborative and strive to bring families and staff together so that they can learn from and with each other.
Good evening, I'm Amanda Patterson. I'm the principal at John Marshall. As a group, we see ourselves as moving along the continuum among these three process conditions. The underlying foundation for our work is what Dr. Map calls the four essential core beliefs. One, all families have dreams for their children and want the best for them. Two, all families have the capacity to support their children's learning. Three, family and school staff are equal partners. And four, the responsibility for cultivating and sustaining partnerships among school, home, and community rests primarily with school staff, especially school leaders.
So thank you so much for your time tonight, and we invite you to attend any of our family events, and we welcome your thoughts and feedback. And was there anyone that didn't speak that was part of the advisory committee that's here tonight? Maybe everyone stand, it's on the advisory. Let's just do that. So are there questions that you might have for any of us?
Well, you'd be disappointed if I didn't ask one, right? I was just thinking about at the lunch, when, when parents come for lunch, is there any kind of learning that's going on, and are there little suggestions that are happening during the lunch break, or when they're there for lunch? Or is it just to enjoy having a meal with their child?
It kind of varies, because they, they played around a little bit with that. Riverview, at one time, was Title I, and they were trying to have something after the meal where they went to the classroom and spent time in there, seeing what the kids were working on in their school day. And I think some of the others might have dabbled in that as well. Some go off to a classroom and just engage in some different activities. So, you know, we're, we're kind of trying to slowly take it along and kind of get that academic piece a little more firm, but we're taking, taking it slowly.
Couple of weeks ago, I took my granddaughter, who's three, to the library, and I thought we were going for a fun music kind of interaction, and it was kind of trickery because they showed three little five-minute videos on things that they wanted you to think about. One was what to do with a child who's extremely upset, and you're beginning to lose your cool. Second of all, it was the importance of car seats and the regulations change all the time. And the third one was how to keep your child in a safe sleeping area. And then, it was really interesting, afterwards, they had you fill out a form about your, your experience, and then they gave you five-dollar Rezur coupons for gas. And I thought, oh, that was kind of clever. So I thought, maybe I should just suggest that you get some Rezur coupons than anybody who watches your little video on cell phone use or making sure children are in safe seats in the car. But I just thought that was kind of clever.
Yeah. Thanks for sharing that.
Nancy, just one question. For the businesses, you mentioned Home Depot in here, and there was the Colossal Fossils. How do we recognize those businesses that partner with us? And also then, the second part, how do we recruit? Or do we actively recruit more local businesses to partner with us?
It does grow. And so in some instances, they are a business and it's, it's, well, we, we use them as a contracted service provider. And so in some instances, we pay them for coming to do the program at the school, sometimes a nominal fee. Other times, they are using it as part of their outreach efforts and their outreach goals. So like for, during the summer, during community connection, they're not charging us for those programs. They want to reach those kids. And so it helps them to meet, meet their mission as well. In terms of recognition, we, you know, we do have some who we've recognized at the Friends of Education breakfast. You know, there's some, like Neighbor's Place, for example, I'll give them a shout-out. They've been doing after-school programs for us for many, 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 many years. And they, they get a grant to do that, so we don't pay anything for that type of program.
And Keith, I don't know if there's an opportunity that I think about what John Winter has done from a tech ed standpoint and the connections and relationships he's made with local businesses that have really, really bolstered those programs at the high schools. I don't know why that couldn't apply at this level, not just for the Title I, but frankly for all the schools. So I, maybe just kind of ponder that as part of the overall strategy that we're talking about.
And I'll just share quickly on that note, I, I've had conversations with a number of community, you know, businesses, industry, who've, who've offered that kind of support. So I think it's, I think we need to figure out what it is we, we need and make, make the ask. I think it was, who said this morning at the, at the Friends of Business, or Friends of Education? Oh, it was Patty, Samky. I just learned, I just have to ask, so, and, and people are very willing to help.
Right. Right.
One of the fringe benefits besides school staff and parents forming connections is parents forming connections with other parents. So that they get to know other parents. You know, it's one thing when your kid talks about who they play with at school, but if you have no idea who the parents are, who the family is, maybe you meet them at one of these events and get to know each other a little bit more, and then they can support each other also.
And I think that's what Thomas Jefferson found when they had that event out at Willow Springs. You know, all of those kids were in their after-school program, and then these were the parents of those kids, along with their kids, and connections were really happening. And that was really nice to see.
That's great.
Teresa, I can tell you from personal experience, having gone to many lunches with my children as the teen, I learned more in that thirty minutes from some of these kids than I did in my previous forty-seven years. They're very open during the lunch. And they share all kinds of things that I'm sure that their mom and dad probably wish they had.
So you're saying they're given talking points?
No, no. They are, they are an open book, and just be prepared to laugh.
One of the volunteers recognized this morning at the Friends of Ed breakfast, she has been going to Hawthorne for many, many years. I thought she said nine years, spending time with kids over those lunches. She's had nine different kids, so. All right. Well, thank you. We want to, I'm sorry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, now I think we can move on to item number eight, Committee and Board Referrals, but there are none. So we'll move on to item number nine, Open Forum, Public and Student Comment for Items Not Appearing on the Agenda. None. None. Okay. Next is Board Member Professional Growth and Development Report. I think you all got a printed copy of that. Would anyone like to share any professional growth or development for the month? Okay, then I would ask that, well, I guess that's a little bit later. Next, Superintendent Commentary.
No, I was just going to share about the, the event this morning. Teresa and Jane were there at the Friends of Education breakfast, and I know I keep saying this, I hope you get tired of it, but just how impressed I am with the level of support from the community. It was shared this morning that last year, over forty-five hundred hours of volunteer time came, came to the district. So it's, you know, very welcomed and much appreciated, and it was a great event this morning, and just continue to be impressed as we, as we get to learn. Thank you.
Fantastic. I would ask that the Board Member Liaison District Activity Report be entered in the official record, and I seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
This is just awesome.